Good morning all. My name is Latisha Holmes and I work for the Planning and Development Department. And I work in the Continuous Quality Improvement as well as Customer Service Division. And my unit is called Business Planning and Management, to which we have oversight of our equity work within the department. And I was invited here by Travis Crane and Bynum Walter and Ken Bowers to help assist in having a discussion around racial equity with your illustrious group. That being said, there are just a couple of, before I give this a Bynum, there are a couple of things that we'd like you to do. Looks like everyone's names are already set up. We ask that you keep your webcam on. Obviously, you're going to do that because you do that regularly. However, if you have any questions during Bynum's presentation, if you could do that and put those in the chat, I'll be monitoring, as will our regular host, will monitor in the chat feature and put those questions in. It just helps the training part of it go a little bit quicker. And then I'd like to just discuss with you a couple of things around ground rules. So the Office of Equity and Inclusion, who we partner with regularly, I'm sorry, I'm looking this way, but who we partner with regularly, have established ground rules, which is best practice when having these conversations. And I love them because they help us really kind of get to the meat, the sauce, and the potatoes of what we're talking about here. Equity is always sometimes a difficult discussion to have, and we're looking to normalize that. So we actually, we take space and we make space. I've witnessed you all on TV before, so I know you know how to do that. But we know that there's some introverts in the group and there's some extroverts in every group. And so if you are someone who likes to take space, we ask that you make space. And if you are someone who likes to make space, we ask that you take space. And what that means is, right, just give opportunity for everyone to have an opportunity to speak and talk. What is said here, obviously safe here, but obviously in this environment, it's going to be broadcasted. But just know that, right, what's said here is safe here, what's learned here is what we want to leave here. Like, that is the major component of that conversation. Obviously, you all, as Planning Commission members, recognize that this is a brave space, and I don't think I need to coach anyone into wanting to talk about anything equity-related and being brave about that. But have the courage to speak up. There is no judgment here because we're listening for understanding. So I skipped to the last one and not necessarily judgment. Offer what you can, so offer us whatever you can and ask for what you need. If you need something, some resources, additional information for us to elaborate, obviously ask for it. And if we don't have the immediate resource right now, I'm sure between Bynum, myself, Ken, and Travis, we can get that to you immediately. I think you already have established rules that say, one mic, one conversation, right? So if someone has the mic, please give them the floor. Try not to have additional conversation or speak over each other. This one is pretty important. Accept and expect that there may be a lack of closure. These conversations sometimes leave us walking away feeling really excited about what's next, but there's no closure on what's next in terms of exactly what that plan will look like. So we ask that you accept that and that you expect that. However, we will be working diligently behind these staff, right, to be able to offer some of those next steps of what we intend to do, but we may not have all the details. And finally, something you probably do regularly, again, just a reminder, not necessarily any educational component, but if we can use I statements and not speak for large bodies of people or types, right, use I statements and talk from who you are. Are the ground rules that we'd like to set here. So if you are in agreement with that, and I do this with staff as well, could you just show, show a hand, just put your hand up? I agree, I can agree to that. All right, I see the hands, awesome. So that being said, we'll jump right to what we intend our agenda to look like. We will start with an overview, which I'll jump into right next. And then we will talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and race. And Bynum will largely lead that. I didn't ask Bynum to introduce herself because I feel like you know her well. And so, but she will be leading us through much of that discussion. And then the two of us will kind of collaborate on the processing and facilitating discussion component. We'll close out, you can ask, obviously, any questions throughout this, and then we'll adjourn. So that is what we intend to have happen next. And so let's talk a little bit about, and jump right in, why do we talk about race? Why talk about racial equity?
Before we start, could I add one quick comment?
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, my son is in quarantine due to the coronavirus. So my children are at home and I can't bring in childcare, so I may be turning my video off from time to time. But I think this is an incredibly important discussion, and I will stay as engaged as possible. Thank you.
I have a comment as well. It looks like in the chat, I can only chat the host. Is that correct?
I think that is correct. However, I'm waiting for the host to confirm.
Yeah, we typically have the chat set up so that you can chat to the host.
Thank you.
Any other logistical responses to the ground rules or any divergence from that for the whole group to understand? Okay. Seeing there aren't none, we'll dive right in. So, why talk about racial equity? I think, again, I feel like I'm talking to a group of individuals who already know many of these points, but to level set us, right? We understand that racial inequities are deep and pervasive in the U.S., right? We know that there is individual bias that contributes to some of these racial inequities. We know that there are structural issues that create these racial inequities. And so it's important to talk about it, to normalize it, and to help us be able to dismantle it. And so with that saying, that being said, right, we know that when we talk about it from an individual level, it increases racial anxiety, and it is often an elephant in the room, and no one wants to talk about it. And then we also know that race is the only predictor of outcomes that we can always point to across all indicators. And so from infant mortality to life expectancy, race predicts how well you do. And then finally, it's one of our organizational values for the city. And so it is very important, I think, for us to talk about race and racial equity, to normalize that discussion, again, so that we can then dismantle all of the structures and institutional components of it, so that we can get to a better place. So with that said, Bynum's going to jump in a lot deeper around diversity, equity, and inclusion and race.
Good morning, everybody. I do want to just take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Bynum Walter. I've worked in the Planning Department for a little bit over seven years. I manage the rezoning program for the city. You most often hear from my colleagues, the staff that I supervise, the case planners who talk to you about rezoning cases and comprehensive plan amendments. And so it's a little bit unusual for me to talk to you. And today, the reason that Latisha and I are talking to you is because we have been participating in the city's cohort that has been working with the Government Alliance for Race and Equity since October of last year. So Latisha and I have been very lucky to be two of the 20 or so city employees that have participated in that training. And the desired outcome of our participation in that is that we would, as a cohort, be positioned to create, to develop an equity plan citywide, working with the city's Office of Equity and Inclusion and our other colleagues that have been participating in the GARE cohort. And I would just say, if you're not familiar with the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, it's a pretty fantastic organization. It's been incredibly helpful to me in the past year. And I just have been so grateful to be participating in that curriculum during the current events of the past 12 months. It has been a real rock for me. So I just wanted to offer that before I plunged into more content. Let's see if I can get the slides to advance now. There we go. You have probably seen this drawing or a version of it somewhere in the last six months. I want to just start our conversation today with a few key definitions, so that we're all on the same page. And so I want to talk about equity, equality, and disparity. They're all different sizes, but standing on boxes of the same size. While everybody's the same. Equity recognizes that different people have different needs and provides them with different resources, so that outcomes are more similar across different folks. I think equality and equity are often confused. I think a great example of this, in recent months for the city, we have been doing work to provide city staff with the personal protective equipment that they need to be safe during COVID. And what I need as a city employee is really just a mask. But that's not adequate for folks working in the fire department, first of all, folks working in the police department, and other folks who do field work, right? If I come to work, all I really need is a mask. And frankly, a cotton mask is adequate. But if I'm a firefighter or a police officer, I'm going to need something different to be safe doing my job right now, right? So I think that's a great example of how, you know, giving everybody the same thing doesn't necessarily meet their need, doesn't necessarily position them for a successful outcome. I want to talk a little bit also about diversity, the range of human differences and qualities. There's so many different facets of human life that make us diverse, whether it's national origin, sexual orientation, ethnicity, race, our physical ability, our religious beliefs, our economic status, our age, our politics, our gender identity, whatever that is. You know, just the wide variety of human existence. And, you know, we talk about diversity as having all those different things represented in the room, you know, that they're physically present. Inclusion is when they are given a voice, really engaged, and fully participating, right? So inclusion means all people have the right to be appreciated, included, as valuable members of the community. It's not enough just to be in the room, right? I want to talk a little bit also about truth. So the moment of truth, your truth, my truth, somewhere in there is the truth, and the truth as we knew it then, and the truth as we know it now. I think a great example of this, truth is very fluid, and I think a really interesting example of this is actually Pluto. And I'm talking about outer space right now. So in 1930, when we discovered Pluto, it was identified as a planet. And the world accepted that. Scientists, laypeople, everybody accepted that Pluto was a planet. And now, since sometime in the late 90s, our definition of what is a planet has changed. And so Pluto is no longer considered a planet. And we all, as far as I know, everybody accepts that, right? Our scientific understanding of the world around us has changed, our knowledge, the facts that we have has changed. And so our understanding of what is true, what is a fact, has also changed. So Pluto, no longer a planet. So I just think it's important to recognize that the information we have at a given time may lead us to a place where we think one thing is true, and when we get some new information later, our truth may change. So just something to think about. I want to talk a little bit about implicit and unconscious bias. These are activated involuntarily, that's really beyond our awareness or our control. Unconscious cognition influences our actions, our understanding, and our decisions. Our biggest influences are likely our family of origin and our environment. That's what shakes us the most, shakes our likes, our dislikes, our thoughts and our feelings of a wide range of topics. And so sometimes how you react, how you perceive something, you don't necessarily have a lot of control over that. And a lot of that is driven by your brain and how efficient it is. As a child, we soak up information like a sponge, and in early adolescence, our brain begins a process of consolidation, where it's trying to take just a very high volume of information that is coming at us, and just trying to put it in buckets to make it make sense, right? Sort of a consolidation. And we begin to differentiate and assign certain traits to certain groups. The example I like to talk about here, I lived in Baltimore for about five years, and I had never lived in a town with a professional football team before. I knew a lot about college basketball because I grew up in Raleigh, but I didn't really know about football. And what I learned is that professional football rivalries, kind of like college basketball rivalries, are really intense. And I've developed a very strong stereotype about Steelers fans as a Baltimore Ravens supporter, as a Baltimore resident. And it, you know, I was making, you know, the experience I was having, Steelers fans are really rabid. I think Roberta Fox is one. And it just, how you, you know, your attitude about sports is a great example of where you're, going back to that implicit unconscious bias might come in. And if, you know, if you stop and make yourself think about it, you might have, you might have control there. So, Latisha, I'm going to hand off to you, I think, for the next couple of seconds. Right? You're going to need to unmute.
Yeah, thank you. I want to make sure that I didn't get re-muted. So we're going to talk a little bit about the elephant in the room, right? And I talked about that, and I highlighted that in the opening, right? And so what we know in terms of best practice when having these discussions about racial equity and moving forward in racial equity, right, that there is over 400 years where we've kind of ignored the outcomes of all of the racial racist practice and racist structures that have been developed, right? They're very complex. In a lot of ways, we don't even see them in front of us, right? We don't know that they're actually in existence because they are so complex. And so what Bynum has just gone through is all of the, right, the implicit biases that also lead into that. You don't know that when you're watching TV, that you are being given some of the media messages that are coming through to you are informing what your practice, how you see things, and how it shapes your perspective of the world. So there's this, this sort of pretend or just unconscious component of this, that you don't recognize that there's a, we live in a post-racial society, that's where we, you recognize that we are in a post-racial society, but you don't think about all of those pieces that have contributed to that. And then sometimes we get to a place where we think that racism no longer exists. But in 2020, we realized very vividly, because some of us were very slowed down, right? We're at home, we're seeing some racial ills go out on the TV. And so we recognize they're still here and they're still pretty prevalent. So there's an elephant in the room, right? Now we need to talk about this, right? We can't just let it sit with us. We know that there's some implicit bias contributing to this, and we know that we don't want to have these structural components still in existence, and we want to do something. And so we realize just ultimately that racism does still exist, and that we are in this post-racial, we are not in a post-racial society. That's it, we are in a post-racial society. So we know some of the other things that, in terms of examples of things that stood out, Bynum talked a little bit about COVID-19 exposing massive disparities in healthcare, in housing, in education. It showed us where there's a wealth gap, the death toll, it just continues to rise as a result of that, and higher for people of color than it is for white people. And so then we knew that the killing of George Floyd sparked a lot of protests in cities nationwide, including here in Raleigh. And there was a lot of white shed on unequal treatment of people of color. But the elephant still existed in the room, and we still felt uncomfortable having that discussion. So we wanted to normalize that. So this is, it's just very interesting how everyone sees these events differently. And so just wanted to expose that, that there is an elephant in the room, and we're trying to move forward in a way to normalize these discussions, to get to a solution, operationalize, and really be able to put some things in place that will allow us to dismantle racism as it exists. So that being said, we're going to jump to a chat question. And in the chat.
We don't, we don't really have good chat function because of the public meetings.
Okay.
Regulations. And so I think it would be better if maybe one or two folks would be willing to just chime in and describe in your own words what race is. I don't think we have time for everybody to offer their thoughts, but maybe if two or three of the commission would be willing to just chime in and describe in your own words what race is. You can.
So to me, race is just a construct to describe others, quote unquote. I grew up in a household, a bicultural household. My father was anthropologist. And so at a young age, we talked about how basically all humans are one in the same or just variations on a theme. And so at some point in history, race was created to help describe others, us and them, or us and others. And growing up bicultural, it was always a curiosity to me that somehow being Latino was a race, when it just seemed like it was part of a culture. And so I think that the discussions that are happening now about race and equity are really important. But anyway, that's probably for another part of the discussion, but that's how I view race. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Is there anybody else who wants to add or expand on that?
I'd just say, it's a social construct that is the basis of our country's social and legal structures, you know, and our economic structures from before the founding of our country. And so because of its foundational use in creating these structures, it's very, there's a lot of work to be done to bring us to a point where the daily experiences of people who've been classified in these categories have equal, or, you know, have access to opportunity in the same ways as one would expect in the description Tika gave of us all being just variations on a theme.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add or expand on what has been offered? Thank you again to Michelle and Tika for sharing their thoughts. Okay, I don't see any more hands, so I'm going to have one more question. Actually, Latisha has a question.
So given what Michelle and Tika have provided, because they are spot on, right, do you think race is real or made up? And again, come to the mic.
Maybe we could do a show of hands. Right hand, if you think race is real, and if race is safe.
Not a good question, I promise you.
I think it's both.
Please, please tell us why.
Well, I mean, I think this goes back to what Tika and I were saying, where I think it is a social construct, but I think it has very real effects in our culture. And I think that it is real in the sense that it has a huge impact on the way we all live our lives.
I would agree. Jennifer, I saw you put your hand up.
One of the things that I often want to understand is, you know, the fact that it's, there's a culture behind it, isn't there some aspect, though, where there's those differences that really should be celebrated too? And so, you know, how, that's, I think that's one area where, you know, I get, you know, often confused because, you know, I want to, I find that there is a certain set of, probably it's not the right word because that can be taken negatively, but, you know, like an honoring of history. And so I feel like that's important, though, as well. So it's just one area where, you know, do I say that it doesn't exist? Well, there's a lot of, you know, lineage and history in different racial ethnicities, backgrounds. So I think that those should be celebrated, though, too, is how I see it, because there's a lot of appreciation for that history and lineage. Anyway, so that's a thought that I had.
Jennifer, I think you raised a very important point about the celebration of history and the telling of history, right, of all histories. And so when we talk in our Office of Equity discussions as a core team, we also talk about how some histories have been not taught, right? And so to your point, right, yes, those histories should be absolutely celebrated, and the differences should be celebrated. But I think, you know, as we go through this question, right, the question is really like, is this made up? Or to Michelle's point, if it's not made up, or we think that it's made up, are there also real implications for the makeup of saying that people are different? And so, and I think to your point, there are real implications, right? Histories are not shared, it's not celebrated as often, everything's not as celebrated as it should be, right? And how do we get to that moving forward? I did see another hand. Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to add to another concept. Oh, were you talking to me or someone else? You're muted. Am I muted? Can anyone else hear?
No, it was me. I apologize. Brian's unmuted at the same time as you, but you can go, and then Brian remuted himself.
Gotcha. I was just going to add on the question of whether race is real and then what is race. I think it absolutely is real. It's a classification system that humans have created for themselves. And I think another important concept, just generally, I know it's something else I learned and a sociological concept as well, is that primates in general tend towards grouping. And as primates, that is what we do, and we can't, and when we can't find something legitimate to group around, we often form tribes around things as simplistic as very simplistic, you know, visual features about each other. And then when, during periods of stress or fear, those groupings tend to get even more extreme. I think that we've seen a lot of that over the, and essentially, those differences in groupings can be stoked to really detrimental effects, and I think we've seen a lot of that in the last couple of years.
Thank you for that. We always love the science of things, and I think Bynum in her next slide, we'll talk a little about science components of that. Do y'all go by Mr., do you address each other Mr. and Mrs., or ma'am, you go by first names? Okay, I just want to be respectful. So Brian, you are next on the mic.
Thank you. And while I don't think it's a trick question, it is hard to answer, and it's similar, I think, maybe to Bynum's point. I mean, I do think it's both. I mean, as Bynum pointed out, we are all different, and we do have differences, so it is real. But the made up part is the way we use it to divide people and get into those groups and tribes. So I just, you know, not as articulate as Ms. Miller, but same idea.
Well, thank you so much. We definitely appreciate all of your perspectives. I think- I think one of the things about it being a trick or harder question to answer is how you define real and what the implications of real mean. So with that, I'm going to turn it over back to Bynum to just talk to us a little bit about science.
Are y'all seeing my screen? Are you seeing the elephant again?
Yes.
Great. Super, thank you. I think this is super fascinating. So every human on earth shares about 99.8% and the 2% for all gene mutations such as Alea's, and Alea is a variant form of a given gene. It is same place from and mutation, what's a dominant, dominant or recessive trait means that we all have different eye colors. So I have green eyes, my sister has brown eyes. Just, that's how it, that those, the variation that we see among us is just a very small, small, small thing compared to the much larger set of characteristics that we share. And this next, so this is a special issue of National Geographic. And what do you think these two girls have in common? Feel free to unmute and say if you know, or, or to offer some ideas about what they have in common.
I think they're twins, right?
Yes, they are fraternal twins, born to an interracial couple. Yeah, yeah. So in addition to sharing that 99.8% genetic code participating in this event. They also have a lot, I mean, they don't know that, and they say, oh, well, they both have curly hair, or, you know, they're agile center or whatever. But yes, they are fraternal twins. Where we can really define the construct of race, which we talked a little bit earlier this morning about. Says a classification structure to make it has lumped diverse ethnic groups into, it has reduced thousands of African ethnic groups into one monolithic group, black. The continent of Europe has about 44 countries and about 200 languages and thousands of ethnic groups. And Africa has about 4, 54 countries and approximately 2,000 languages. So can you imagine if we said that Irish, French, and Italians were all the same? No, we don't, we don't think about those cultures that way, but that's exactly how European scholars approached African cultures. They created a system that justified the invasion and control over since containing people of color to access natural resources such as gold, oil, and coal. So, so how we have approached race and, and thought about race and how we have used that construct has varied based on what folks saw to gain by using it. So it says a Hobo dire map projection, and it's a cylindrical equal area projection with standard parallels north out of
The colonizer colonies are much smaller than the countries they colonized.
Right. What else do you see above this?
The south is up.
The south is up, right, right. So this is, you know, we're trained, we've, we've been trained to see the world this way, right? To see north as up and to see the colonizers as larger than the, those being, than the areas being colonized. That's a great observation, Commissioner McIntosh. So just a reminder of the perspective that map maker, that the map propagator perpetuates with their images. This is an arbitrary sociobiological classification created by Europeans during the time of worldwide colonial expansion to assign human worth and social status using themselves as the model of humanity for the purpose of legitimizing white power and white skin privilege. That is really big and broad, and I want to bring it down a little bit and talk about what that has looked like in Raleigh. So Latisha and I have been, we talk about this article all the time. It's an article by a scholar named Karen Benjamin, who studied school segregation in Raleigh. She's a professor, I think she's at Elmhurst College in Illinois now, and found segregation in Raleigh largely around school segregation. So remember, redlining and segregation in a lot of America was perpetuated by the homeowners' law corporation and the redlining maps that were generated for so many cities in, in the US. There was no redlining map for Raleigh. And the reason is that in like, in the 30s and 40s, when those maps were made, Raleigh was really pretty insignificant. The cities in North Carolina that have maps, Durham, Winston-Salem, Asheville, Charlotte, there's one more, Greensboro, all of those cities were much bigger than Raleigh was at the time. So Raleigh was, you know, like 30, 40,000 people, and the maps that were made in North Carolina were only for cities with populations of over 50,000. That does not mean that segregation didn't happen here, it just happened a different way. And largely it happened around school policy, school location, and school development. So before 1920, the distribution of schools for African-American students, it's not entirely obvious that there's segregation happening. And in fact, the school that's labeled number one in the image on the left is the school that was in Overland Village, which is one of the largest freed peoples settlements in the country at the time. And you can see that schools were segregated, but it, it's not as clear that Raleigh is segregated, right? And then you see in the 20s that the Overland School closes and the schools that remain, not only are the actual schools segregated, but they're, they're segregating Raleigh also. And we still see levels of visible segregation in our distribution of population today. So this map is actually pretty old. Every time I pull it up, I think we should get the 2020, 2010 version. This is from 2000. But you can see, so the blue dots represent people of color, African-Americans specifically, and the red dots represent white people. And you can still see that strong concentration of African-Americans in the southeastern part of the city, and that's very closely tied to how school, schools were located. And frankly, the school sites that were assigned and, and for African-American students were fewer than they were for white students, and they were also in much less desirable places. So in lower lying areas, part of the Karen Benjamin article talks about how the school site that is finally offered after so many years of agitating and, and really demanding for a new school is on top of an old landfill, which is, I believe, roughly where the women's prison is now. So just this ongoing use of public investment to patrol and organize and manipulate how our city looks. And no, this is it. So at this point, I'd like to ask if folks have questions about what Latisha and I have talked about. I'm going to take this down so that we can see you.
Yes, Shelley. Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me now? You said something that was interesting about, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, because you said that communities, when you were talking about the, the spaces, the blue dots and the red dots, that the communities were built, were built around the schools? Can you explain that? That with segregation, where the communities, where the schools were then built around within those communities? So what would gap at what?
Sure, so please your question is location. Let's, not necessarily to serve but to propel and I'd be happy to share this
Bynum, you're very choppy. I can't hear, I can't hear you very well. I don't know if it's just me, but you're, it's really choppy. I'm hearing like every few words.
I can switch to head-
Could you, could you call in on your phone?
Yes, while she gets herself together, Brian, I see you have a question. I would summarize, Shelley, just really quickly, that the way the article reads, it reads as though, and what we believe is represented by the article, is that the, the school, the school system was built around this flight from downtown Raleigh, because that's where a good portion of the white residents of Raleigh lived. There was a lot of integration in Raleigh at the time, and so there was this flight from downtown Raleigh to the better parts, or better land, as, as folks were attempting to call it, of Raleigh. And so the schools then followed, right? And then people then migrated, more white people then migrated to build schools. And so that is where the segregation started to happen as opposed to the redlining that other folks saw, right? It wasn't, it wasn't as prevalent in Raleigh, it was based on the school system and people wanting their children to have better education once this sort of white flight happened in downtown Raleigh, to move away from that area. Because that seemed to be the area that was most concentrated by white people in, in higher classes. And so once they started finding these better places to live, the schools then followed, but that was pervasive then moving forward, is kind of where the article takes you. And again, Bynum is happy to share the article, we will certainly share that back, because it is, it is a very powerful art, article to understand Raleigh's history. I'm from New Jersey, and it, it is more of a redlining, home ownership segregation in New Jersey than it is here in Raleigh. And so that being said, I will ask Mr., oh, Brian, if it comes to the mic, yes.
I was just going to say, yeah, Nicole, it's choppy for me as well, so just so, so you understand, I was having a hard time also. But yes, I think it'd be a good idea. I would like to see the article, I'm sure others would as well, so please send that out. And I'm just wondering, we have a DEI committee at my company, and we get regular emails with links to articles and other things. And I'm wondering if Latisha and Bynum, if, if your Gare or some group couldn't just, to our planning commission emails, send us regular updates on articles and things like that. I, I would find those very helpful, and I'd be interested in receiving those on a regular basis.
So I, I would respond to the Office of Equity that has been established in the city of Raleigh is, right, it's been a long time coming to have this lens on equity and inclusion and diversity in the city of Raleigh. And so with that though, they are a small team, but they are looking forward to the opportunity to be able to do more training, right? So we wouldn't necessarily call this training, this is a level set, this first part of this, it's a level set, and to normalize these conversations. But they're going to be looking to do more training, and I'm kind of talking about a slide that's way ahead, but I think this is an appropriate time just to say, right, they're going to be doing more trainings as well as developing libraries of resources. And so I say that to say internally they're doing that, but they also want to work externally. And so y'all may have heard in the city council meeting, right, they are going to be doing training for a city council, to which you all hopefully will have opportunities to witness and participate in. But then they want to then kind of level set at that leadership level, and then go filter down into the different planning boards, commissions, councils, so that, right, you have actual tools that you can use, right? So to your point, having an article is a tool you can use, but also what other tools will help you make decisions, make better decisions and the like. And so to your point, that is forthcoming. I think Bynum and I can share what we have currently, that'll be helpful to you, that we know we're using to help develop these trainings and the like. But just know, in the forthcoming time, you will get more information, and it will likely come directly from the Office of Equity Inclusion, either directly from them or through your meetings with representatives from planning that have gone through the Gare cohort training.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Latisha, I just want to say thank you. And again, since I have the floor, I'm going to have to sign off here shortly, unfortunately. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. So thank you.
Well, you're welcome, and we will miss you. I thought, yes, okay, I know I saw other hands. Shelley, I see you waving. We'll go with you first.
I have a saying goodbye to Brian, that's all, sorry.
And then Michelle, I see you.
Thank you, Latisha. I, I'd be interested in hearing Bynum's answer to Shelley's question, because it sounded like, you know, she was talking about the same things Latisha was talking about, but there might have been some other detail, and I'd be interested in hearing that with better audio.
We're working on the audio.
Okay, or later.
While we work on her audio, again, I will reference what is considered national best practice, and so, and how we set up this conversation today. So as I mentioned, we wanted the level set, and national best practice would have us in talking about issues of equity normalized, right? And so that is what- And so, that is what this level set was meant to do. Many of you, as you have come to the mic, have had much of this training and know much of this content, right? But we wanted to make sure that, right, we were all coming from it from the same sort of perspective. And then it goes into operationalizing and organizing that information. And so, I just want to say that was what I was offering to the gentleman who just jumped off. So, right, the operationalizing and the organizing, right, these are all on a continuum of cycle, right? And so, there will be fits and starts, right? And as I mentioned earlier, you can expect to, right, that there will be some closure and expect that there will not be any closure. And so, as I talk about that, that takes us into our next component, which is, again, more normalizing for us to talk more freely about some issues of race and racial equity. And so, that being said, I'm going to jump in, because, right, Bynum and I, we're going to do this together, but until we can get her audio together, we're just going to engage in a discussion. Or I will pause for a second. Do we want to take a five-minute break to see if we can get her back online? Yeah, I didn't see which one of your hands went up first, so I'm going to go with Jennifer, because Blaney's been on the mic twice.
I was just going to suggest a five-minute break, but...
Five-minute break? All right, perfect. So, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back at exactly 12. Worked out perfect. Exactly noon, we'll come back and we'll get started into the facilitated discussion.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. So, Commissioner Winters asked a question about whether or not the location of schools was being driven by where the population was, or was the location of population being driven by the location of schools? I think it's a two-way street, but what I have read indicates that the African-American community was asking for schools to be located in places other than southeast Raleigh, and those requests were not granted. And so, the school board continued to create this concentration of African-American schools in one particular part of the city as a way to influence and control and limit where African-American people could practically live, right? So, if you had school-aged children, you weren't going to live across town where there was no school to serve you.
Any additional questions? Oh, go ahead, Bynum.
Well, I was just going to say, we've made some technology changes. I've switched my audio. Hopefully, you can all hear me better. And Ira has graciously stepped in to help us with our presentation, and I think we can shift to that now if folks are ready. Are you folks ready to move on?
So, where we left off, I was kind of giving some background on the Office of Equity and its establishment. So, just wanted to be able to share with you the equity statement for the city of Raleigh. I know I don't need to read a bedtime story to you, but I think this is a really powerful statement in where we are, so I am going to read a bedtime story to you. And as I read, obviously, you can follow along. "The city of Raleigh is committed to establishing and advancing an equitable community for all, because we know that race is a primary predictor of a person's outcomes across all social indicators and societal systems. The city of Raleigh will prioritize racial equity to dismantle the policies and systems that have created and sustained these inequities. Inequities in our systems and policies are costly and limit positive outcomes and the quality of life for all of us. When we achieve racial equity, all people in Raleigh will benefit from a just equitable system. Raleigh aspires to be a model for equity in local government." So, there's some pretty powerful statements in there, and we have kind of hinted to this in multiple times throughout this discussion. And so, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to reflect on that for a second, and if you have any immediate thoughts, I would offer this as an opportunity to be able to respond. And one of the things, Bynum is smiling, because, oh, I see someone on the mic.
Yeah, I was just going to say this goes back to Nicole Bennett's recommendation that we do a comprehensive, full review of the comprehensive plan through a lens of equity to ensure we have policies in place that are enforceable.
Agreed. I would say, part of the history of being able to go through the GARE cohort training was driven by council suggestions that we do look at the comp plan and we look at other policies, to which Ken and I had some conversation about the ability to raise this opportunity to go through the GARE cohort, to continue to build capacity within the city, not just within the planning department. And his efforts led to being able to walk in tandem with getting that capacity built, and then also pushing forward to where we are now and having an Office of Equity to help us develop a racial equity plan that would include looking at the comprehensive plan. And so, I can probably speak for Dr. Seether in that she's going to be looking for assistance and commitment to that effort, and will likely come to your group to be able to do that. So, any other thoughts, comments? Okay. Well, that being said, we're not ready for that yet, Ira. That being said, we're going to jump right into the processing part of this discussion. And this just gives an opportunity for you all to kind of reflect and offer us some insights and just hear where you all are when it comes to racial equity and some of the things that we've experienced, and talk about some of the things we've already gone over in terms of level set. And so, that being said, Bynum and I are going to kind of go back and forth, and ask you some questions and get you to all participate more fully. So, that being said, we're going to jump right in. How did you learn about the meaning of race? Some of you already kind of dove in here and kind of told us a little bit about your background and how you were raised. She said you have a father who's an anthropologist, which is really amazing. But we all have different perspectives and backgrounds, and just wondering, how did you learn about race? Yeah, Shelley.
Since your participation. I'd say I learned about race by living it, because it was something in terms of some may have a blindness. When you're living life, when you realize that there are differences and that you were on the... Difference. That's what we're seeing, okay? That's when it starts becoming more apparent. So, that... I'll say, for instance, being bused to a school across town, that was then more so apparent, why I was going, living in South Park, why I was going to Eldred Root all the way off of Lassiter Mill at such a young age. So, it was through experiences that I began to understand race.
No, Bynum, I see you coming to the mic.
No, I just wanted to call on Commissioner Bennett, who has her hand up very politely.
Thank you. I was just going to echo what Shelley said. It was through experience. I grew up in a part of North Carolina, very poor part of North Carolina, where there's a very distinct divide between the haves and the have-nots. It's actually a majority-minority area, but the power lies with the minority. I went to a majority-minority high school, and then I left and came to Durham to the School of Science and Math, and I think that's really when I started being the only one that looked like myself in a classroom. And then I went to UNC. You know, again, you're the only one in many of your classes. And looking back on that, I've actually had this conversation before. What I noticed was my voice got smaller and smaller. When I was back at my other high school, even in that very poor area where we didn't have a lot, I was very comfortable speaking, speaking up, talking about whatever. As I became the only one who looked like myself in these rooms, I started speaking less and less. I started going from the front of the classroom to the back of the classroom. And that carried over really into my career. I noticed that I just would, I was still doing good work, but I was letting my work speak for me instead of my voice. And it has taken some time for me to find my voice again, and I guess, as you all know, I found it. But I think it was that experience of just seeing yourself, seeing people who look like you versus, whoa, I'm isolated here, and it really does something to your psyche.
Thank you for bringing that, Commissioner Bennett. Anybody else to respond to the question that Latisha posed, which is, how did you learn the meaning of race?
Commissioner Hicks had the floor.
Thank you. My experience was obviously a little bit different. I look mostly like my father, who is of Swedish descent, but my mother is from Peru, from South America. And I think I learned about race in elementary school while riding a school bus and hearing other kids saying derogatory and racist things about Black and Brown people, including Latin Americans and Hispanics, and realizing that they had no idea, you know, that that was part of my identity and culture, because I didn't look the, you know, stereotypical role, and realizing that even my peers at elementary school had, you know, had these kind of what seemed like very strange ideas about how differences are viewed. So, that, I think, was probably my first experience with race.
Sorry, I'm slowed on mute, Commissioner Mackintosh.
Yeah, I guess my beginning understandings of race was also in elementary school. I was really lucky to go to a grade school that was pretty integrated, and my school bus that I rode home was also the school bus that the kids from the segregated Black community rode, so I got to ride through their neighborhood. And as a second grader, I recognized that their neighborhood did not have the same level of care as mine, and I understood that it was, this was at the city level, not at the level of their neighborhood. I understood this was an unfair situation. But the experience of being in school with those kids was, it was so fun, and it was the warmth and vibrancy of that neighborhood. I felt so lucky to be, you know, exposed to it just on a very, you know, superficial level, as, you know, being in class with some kids from that neighborhood and riding the bus with them. And as I progressed through school, you know, in later grade school and into junior high, my interactions with those kids became less as our schools started tracking the Black kids into separate classes from the majority of the white kids. And by the time I was in high school, you know, there were only a few Black kids in the honors, you know, the honors classes in my high school, even though we had a large population of Black students. We were basically two separate schools, and I knew from my experience in grade school that it was not based on the potential of those kids, that it was based on, you know, an arbitrary unfair structure.
I see the chair.
I think Matt had his hand raised first. I can let him go first?
Oh, sorry about that. I broke up for a minute. Yeah, I'd say, you know, I actually grew up in Connecticut, and I applied Hartford, Connecticut, and which, you know, is an area, I was in a town, and I think it was kind of similar on the bus with other kids, hearing derogatory terms or statements. But my community was actually, I really didn't interact with anyone who wasn't white when I was younger. I'm starting to realize that, you know, later on, when I was in high school, middle of middle and high school, realized that it was incredibly segregated and still was. And it wasn't until one of my friends who, I actually went to a different school, not with a kind of different folks who are from different areas, and one of my friends lived in actually Hartford, and he lived in a nice area, but a few streets down, the homes were in much different shape that I had never really seen before. And that was really the first experience that I had, kind of understanding the systemic differences. But it wasn't really until my college roommate had, his father was Black and his mother was white, and it wasn't until living with him that I actually understood what he was conditioned, what he basically had to condition himself with growing up in New Jersey. And subsequently, I'd say it wasn't really until my brother-in-law is Black and grew up in southern Virginia and understanding, it's kind of layers, I'd say, it's kind of of experience, but to where, especially in the last four years, understanding just sheer fear of my, that my brother-in-law experiences on a daily basis, that shifted my wife and I's whole perspective, the privilege that we do have. And I think that that's, you know, awareness versus actual, tangibly experiencing it through family was just a huge shift, I think, for my wife and I. And, you know, and my wife actually, but both of her are immigrants, and she's Cuban and has had this, I think, similar tatica, hasn't, her parents have told her that she's white, but she checks a different box, you know, than two boxes when she's filling out different... So, we've had this conversation for a while, but it wasn't until we really started to engage with our brother-in-law around this that we fully understood how different life was for her. That was a little bit beyond, but I feel like it was kind of layers of, you know, a friend and then family, and it was, yeah, and so, it's been a...
Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. So, I sort of, my introduction to race is probably in two parts. First academically, and then the second experience. But the National Geographic visual struck me. I'm a biracial woman, and my sister and I, growing up, looked slightly different from each other, and we had very different experiences. And now, I have one brown baby and one white baby, who are very genetically similar to each other, but will also continue to share very different experiences throughout their entire lives. So, my, both of my parents were political activists. My dad is a Chinese immigrant, but his parents were first immigrants away from China to Malaysia, where they were fighting issues related to communism, and then later in Malaysia, different apartheid racial systems that were also happening in that country. And he became an immigrant to the United States in the 20s, when he was in his 20s, excuse me. And then my mom was a post-civil rights era activist as well. And shortly after they married, actually, Mom was working in the Mississippi Legislature in fiscal research and ended up having to move because things got... and ended up having to move because things got progressively unsafe for them as they started to have babies. And so, growing up, I actually grew up in Durham. And we didn't have a whole ton of money. But both my parents, and both my parents are very involved in local politics, especially around school integration for Durham. And we always had a very diverse set of friends and educational experiences. So that was sort of where I learned about, we talked about it a lot. I learned about it a lot. I had a lot of shared experiences culturally. And then when we moved to Cary, to Wake County Public Schools and high, in elementary schools, that was the first time that I started noticing the difference in experienced personal level. My older sister is just two years older than I am, but she looks quite a bit more Chinese than I do, even though we're obviously very close. And many people didn't know we were sisters. And she suffered very extreme bullying in elementary school and very, very racist derogatory terms and sometimes violent, scary experiences and things like that. And then I got to have this, a similar, you know, school trajectory, but incredibly different lived experience. And I always thought that that was the most asinine thing, that she just looked a little bit different than I did and had such a different experience. So that was probably the most eye-opening. And then, you know, beyond that, the rest of my life, just the difference, experience that my father has and that some of my sisters have had have continued to impact me throughout the rest of my life. And the long list of some of those. But I'm very interested to see how the difference in the appearance between my two boys will also change their experience as well.
Thank you all for sharing, just keeping the mic open. If there's someone else who feels, else can't, what, can't hear me?
Jennifer has her hand raised.
Okay, that's perfect. I just saw this and I'm alerted illegal. Yes, Commissioner Lamont, you have a floor.
I think I'm. Seattle, and I moved to this, really it was the high school. It's significantly diverse. I think it's. My best friend. African American and.
I think Jennifer's breaking up as well. Is that just me? Your speaker's also breaking up, Jennifer.
Commissioner Lamont, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you. And I know that other folks on the call are also. And so I don't know if you could switch to headphones or if you want to try to call in so that we can hear you better, so you can participate more fully. I think Ray could chat you some instructions about that, if that would be helpful. Is there anybody else that wants to add anything on this particular topic? I'm not seeing hands. And so I just would, I'm just kind of reflecting on what I have heard you all say. And a wide variety of experiences and a wide variety of how you learned about race. Part of what I'm hearing is that the, and I have, Letitia and I have facilitated a handful of conversations like this for other, for departments within the city. And part of what I'm hearing is that the people of color in the group have experienced more, more kind of pain or disillusionment than I'm hearing white folks describe. And that's been true in a lot of the conversations like this that I have listened to. And just wanted to acknowledge that, that sometimes what the, how we learn about these things varies. Our lived experience varies. And sometimes they're really uncomfortable. And sometimes they're easy. And it depends on what kind of privilege you enjoy. I would like to, we have about 30 minutes left as a group. And I want to move us along to talk about current events. And just, I would start with, how are you feeling about current events locally and nationally? Is that, whether it's about COVID or some of the social unrest that we experienced here locally earlier this year? How are you feeling about current events locally and nationally? And I'm looking for a volunteer to start our conversation. Not seeing any hands right now. Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Go for it.
I'll try to be brief. Let me just say, I have come a long way. A couple years ago, I found myself extremely angry, very, very angry. In realizing that some of the elders in my family had that type of anger, and I never understood it. And I came to understand, this is why they're so angry. And I think it came from feeling like, as I was finding my voice professionally, personally, working very hard to accomplish certain things and feeling like I was being held back simply because of how I looked and not being taken seriously for, for my education, my accomplishments. And then seeing that going on all around me, locally, you know, regionally, nationally. And I just became really, really angry and probably unpleasant to be around. And I, I worked on that a lot. I, I found some people like me. We talked about it. We worked through it. And, and we've worked through the events that are going on nationally together. That has been very helpful. So while I still have anger, I think it's a much more constructive anger now. And it allows me to be able to perhaps articulate some of the things that I do, like on this commission or in, in, in other areas of, of my life. There's still some disillusionment, though, when, when I look at how divided we are as a nation around issues that I feel like we shouldn't be divided around. It just, it makes me, I'm a lot less trusting. And I, you don't, my circle is extremely small. Because when you see what's going on on the news or you hear about this happened or that happened, I, I look at people and go, am I really your friend? You know, do you really respect me like you said you do? And so I think I, I hold the people that I know are my people close to me. And that doesn't necessarily mean Black people. It just means people who I know are true friends. I hold them close to me. And I'm kind of suspicious of others. I hate that because I haven't, that's not who I am. But, but I do find myself sort of looking at others and questioning their motives and, and looking at people who interact with my children and wondering, you know, how are you viewing my children? My son has locks and I'm very protective of him. It worries me when he goes out about how he's going to be perceived. So there's a lot of anxiety. I, I have to, I have to say, I have some anxiety around what's going on for myself and for my children. There's some anger. There's some disillusionment. There's a little bit of hope and optimism, and I try to focus more on that. But if I'm being honest, I think I, I find myself feeling exhausted a lot. And I think there are a lot of people that are exhausted like I am.
Thanks for sharing that. And so Frank. Are y'all, are y'all hearing me? Oh, boy.
We can hear you.
Great. Oh, that's good news. Thank you. The phone was beeping repeatedly. It's kind of freaking me out. Thanks, Commissioner Bennett, for sharing and for being so frank. Are there, I see Commissioner Winters, you have your hand up.
I, I echo. I'm going to be informal in this setting, guys. What Nicole was saying about the exhaustion, about what we see in the media, what we experience locally. And then I'll even address it to what, I'll say for me, I, that was one of the rules, what I then see when we're planning and the, the inconsistency across the board. I'll just give you a quick story. I was at a doctor's office. This was when Eric Garner died and his son was crying. And I started crying. I was like, oh, my God, another Black man was killed again. Oh, my God. I was crying. And a woman came to comfort me. She said, but why does that bother you? White woman, why does that bother you? And I'm like, and, and that stuck with me. And then looking at situations of unless it's happening to you or unless it look, the situation that looks like you. That, that she couldn't understand because of my son, my father, that I still connected to his experience. And that is the other part that is exhausting of senses, seeing them, because it's, it's a trauma that happens every time, nationally, locally, even, even here. And you all have heard me make conversations about inconsistency in various parts of town. It's another trauma of why is this acceptable? And it's, and it's not exhausting the aspect of what you feel every day and trying to contain that. Or, or trying to give voice to it in a constructive way, because the other part of it is every Black woman. And the other part that we don't talk about, or, or being the emotional woman, but still trying to give voice to your experience, voice to the, the inequities that you see and trying to draw that line to to bring awareness to it. Because I don't think, I'll say for this body that is not caring, I just think it's not maybe connecting those dots. So that's why I go through such pains to try to connect the dots when I see them. So it is, as Nicole said, it is the exhaustion. And it is also fear. And it is a fear that I have never experienced in my life. It's a fear that I can only equate to what my grandparents felt. And trying to still stand strong as, with a woman in my own agency in this time which we're living. That the crack can unleash. And you just really don't know what to expect when you go out the door.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. Again, thank you for being frank, for being honest. Are there others that want to chime in? Commissioner Bennett?
I waited to see if anybody else had anything to say. I don't want to dominate the conversation. But I do want to add, I think, something that, sorry, things are popping up on my screen, that I think people of color feel that maybe others might not. I could be wrong, so I don't want to say they don't. I feel an overwhelming burden to represent the people who went before me and who didn't have a seat at the table like I do or the voice like I do. I feel a burden to represent them in everything I do and every decision I make. I don't say that to complain at all, but it's just an extra level of responsibility, an extra level of thinking that you go through. In, in, in the way I vote on some of these cases of, I'm looking at the specific case and, and I am definitely putting it in its proper context. But in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, you know, somebody didn't have this opportunity to cast this vote. Somebody didn't have an opportunity to say, hey, look out for my neighborhood. And so you feel that burden, and that adds to that exhaustion. It's a very real exhaustion, a very real mental toll. But it's a responsibility that I embrace and that I take very seriously because I know people who went before me worked, fought, died so I could be on a planning commission or live in the neighborhood that I live in and enjoy some of the privileges. I have privileges too that I enjoy. And I feel like I owe it to them to consider them in every decision that I make. It's exhausting, but I, it's definitely worth it because they did it for me, even when they didn't have the voice and the opportunities to be effective like I do.
Thank you for that. So just a reminder of where we are in the conversation. How are you feeling about current events locally and nationally? Are there other folks who want to speak to that? For Commissioner, Commissioner Hicks?
I just wanted to comment. I, I feel like the statements that Commissioner Bennett and Winters made are, are really powerful ones. And that it's important to recognize them as being powerful. And also just to say, you know, I am sorry that you have to live with fear and uncertainty and anxiousness. And hopefully, as we move forward in the future, that we can help carry some of that burden so that it can dissipate. I don't know. I'm not really sure how to say it. It's just, I feel like it should be recognized as being a really powerful statement and that you don't, you're not standing there completely alone. And in that way, I feel like there is some progress. It's, it's, it's not at the scale it needs to be. But we are trying to lean forward into change. And just to know that there are people out there that are, you know, want that change as well. And I also just wanted to add that even though I've lived with this my whole life, you know, as a young person, I learned to basically hide my cultural identity because it wasn't a benefit to me, which is a terrible thing. Nobody should have to do that. But I feel like now that's not the case as much. And I think that that's welcome and important and, and that that does give me hope. I think having conversations like this are important. And ironically, I have learned so much over, since this summer about what racism, the experience of racism is like in America and what the history was. I mean, it's incredible to me at my age that I'm learning this, these things now. And I, I think that that's, gives me hope and, and has some power to it as well. And, and I really look forward to continuing on that trajectory. We're just getting started. Thank you.
I think, I just wanted to take a moment to move us to next. But I think you guys already kind of started channeling us that, in that way. I, I see your hands, Commissioner McIntosh. So I'm going to stop and pause to give you the mic.
Sorry, I, yeah, I guess just one kind of minor thing about my reactions to national and local events this year around Black to national and local events this year around Black Lives Matter protests specifically. I've been, I've participated in protests since I was in college. So, you know, over 30 years. And I was heartbroken in June, the night that Raleigh Police Department used pepper spray on peaceful protesters. And it was heartbreaking because I've been to so many protests in downtown Raleigh. And I know the Raleigh Police Department has a, a practice of supporting citizens' right to their First Amendment. And in my experience, when I have been at protests in downtown Raleigh, the police have always done a really good job of making sure we were all safe. And that included an anti Sharia protest a few years ago at the Capitol grounds where there, it, it, there, you know, there were two sides that were very in disagreement. But the police, you know, were a peaceful presence and kept the group separate and made it possible for everyone to express themselves. And what struck me this in, on that night in June was this was people protesting extrajudicial killing, protesting, you know, for Black Lives Matter. And that's when the tear gas was used. And I had been, just that, that's, that was the group that it was okay to do this to. And it was just so heartbreaking and upsetting to see that. And it wasn't surprised, it was, it was just, we hadn't seen that in a long time. And so it was just really hard. I don't know how to express it. It, it, it felt like a rupture.
Commissioner Lampman, I saw you had your hand up.
Let's see if this works a little bit better. So, yeah, I share the sentiment of Commissioner McIntosh. When I moved here, I knew it would be tough. And I think that with 2020, and, and when I say tough merely because I think that there are, you know, Seattle more so, like the diversification I was mentioning and, and, you know, Denver. And then I lived in Seattle for a bit, so very diverse areas of the country. And it's, there's still challenges, but it's not the same here as it is here. And I think in 2020, I mean, quite frankly, with 2016, I was shocked at where the nation stood, you know, and some of the backwards thinking, you know, moving backwards in time, not that, that those, those, some of those perspectives are, are still embedded in a history that is not where I think we aspire to be. And, and it was, the, the transition here has been phenomenal because I absolutely love Raleigh and I, and I love North Carolina and it's beautiful in every way. And I think it is, Raleigh itself is progressive, more so than other areas. And, but I think overall, you know, again, like the protests and everything that happened throughout the country, it was just devastating because, I mean, and me, I realized, I knew in 2016 how much of a bubble I lived in. And so, you know, kind of coming out to this part of the country, I wanted to really hear what was going on and then hopefully be part of the evolution into what we all aspire. So that's my thoughts on the current environment.
I think you have brought it back again, Commissioner Lampman, to a wonderful segue, right? I think, you know, the things that have come up were a lot of shared sentiments, but also unique experiences. And in those unique experiences are this hope and this, this ability to want to propel to what's next and how do we get to what's next? What, what, what are, if that is a burden that we share? Is that a burden that we carry on a regular basis because that we feel like it's our responsibility from local and current events, but local and national events that are historical, that we want to move forward? And so in that concept of thinking about moving forward, what do we have to do to confront, what things, what must we confront? What things do we need to confront in order to move us forward and interrupt this culture of fear and hate that we've kind of just talked about? So that we are all making that effort together? So what are things that, right, actionable things that, and I think Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Winters already had started to go down that path of talking about decisions in their, in this sphere of influence of this group, of the planning commission. But you can talk about things that, right, in your larger sphere of influence outside of here, right? So your chair, Chair Thomas Sewell, talked about, right, how his conversations and his sphere of influence have impacted him to change his and his wife's perspective. So just wanting to hear from you all, like, what are the things that we must confront immediately to be able to move forward? Yes, Commissioner Hicks?
Access to health care, access to education, access to equal work for equal pay.
Chair, do you have your hand raised?
I guess I've been having issues. Can you hear me with? Yeah, okay. I, I mean, I know it's, it's on the smaller scale, but I also think that it's having conversations and sharing information and education amongst our own personal circles is, is really important. I know that our family has had really challenging conversations and, you know, hasn't gone how you might want it to or expect it to. But it's still moves things forward. And, and I, I think that this is the first time in my life where even met family members who don't talk about things or won't talk about things are confronted with things that they don't necessarily want to hear or have acknowledged. And, you know, it's, it's, I, I think it, becoming more uncomfortable for more people is a positive. And it forces people out of, out of their, their comfort zone. And, yeah, and then I think as far as, that's kind of more on a personal level, but I guess at a, at a city level, you know, I think it's continuing, at least for me, it's, it's like continuing to really understand why things are happening, how they've happened and, and how do we, again, get people to have the convers, these conversations that are less comfortable about why things are and, and to be, I think, more open and accepting. You know, it's, I think that we have a lot of assumptions when it comes to city planning and expectations. And, and I think that the more that we can understand the path that has gotten us here, the better we can understand how to change the path going forward. And I think that that's why understanding a lot of the rules and regulations and policies that have been put in place that seem benign actually have a significant acuteness to them. And, yeah, and just hope that we can continue to elevate, you know, the data that we use and sophistication that we use and the language that we use and the openness that we have to understanding the real implications and stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. I think picking up on, on what Matt just said, I was trying to write down ideas as he was talking. Understanding how we got to where we are is really important. And as a planner, someone who was trained as a planner, who, who has an interest in equity and equitable development, I have learned that planning has been one of the most effective tools at segregating us that there is. I mean, consciously, unconsciously, a lot of it was very intentional. And so we as planners have to own our role in it and understand that role. Because some of it, I, I thought, wow, I didn't even know that. So I think we, we need to understand how we got to where we are. We need to recognize why is flooding in Southeast Raleigh? You know, why is there flooding? Why did Southeast Raleigh settle like it did? Why does North Raleigh look like it does? Why is there a North Raleigh and a Southeast Raleigh? Understanding all of that, I think, is very important to helping us look at some of the cases that come before us and understanding why we get some of the comments that we do. If someone says, I don't, we don't need any more renters in this neighborhood. And we think, well, I mean, we can't control that. We can't. But it helps us understand what they're talking about. Why are renters being steered to certain parts of the city and homeownership is being promoted in other areas of the city? Things like the, why are certain developments coming to certain parts of the city, but other parts of the city don't enjoy those same development proposals? I think that's, that's huge. And I'm really looking forward to what's the, the additional training that's coming to us as a commission. I'm looking forward to what the city is going to be doing in terms of reevaluating the comprehensive plan, looking at some of the language of the comprehensive plan and what it's going to mean in terms of staff reports that we look at and how we evaluate those cases. And maybe being able to look at them more through a lens of equity. I, I, I think that's probably something that excites me most about what we can do as a body and as a city to make things better.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Lampman, I see your hand. Bynum, this might be later in the conversation, so I don't want to steal your timing. But you seemed really engaged with what Commissioner Bennett was saying. So have you guys, it seems like that this process has begun. What are you seeing? What is your experience so far in looking at the comp plan through this lens?
Well, so we are working right now on what I think of as the Band-Aid, which is to introduce, we actually had a meeting immediately prior to this one with staff to look at how we can better address questions of equity in the resounding staff analysis. But I think that without revising the comprehensive plan, that that is really an interim measure, right? And I think that to authentically and genuinely modify the comprehensive plan to address equity requires public engagement. And that that means that that is going to be a slow process. And on the one hand, I feel very frustrated by that because I think like all of you, I would really like to stand up and walk out of the room and go and do something about the problems that I see around me. But I recognize that planners doing stuff on behalf of other people is like 90% of why we are having this conversation. And so I just, you know, I think we are planning a thematic revision to the comprehensive plan that will probably begin in the first half of the next calendar year. That's part of the broader equity efforts of the city. The, so the expectation is that the citywide equity plan would put forward a path to revisit the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan and also the unified development ordinance to evaluate and address issues of equity. That's just really slow moving work, right? The battleship is slow to turn. And I just would encourage some patience as we work our way through that and engage Raleigh, broader Raleigh in those efforts. It will take, it will take time.
Commissioner Winters?
Yes, and the interim, Bynum is helping me with the district planning committee. And we're, we're looking at, and we're looking at what, what we can address more in a more immediate timeframe while they're working out the comp plan. So I'm excited to be doing this work with you, Bynum.
We are about out of time. Leticia, do you want to wrap up with those last few slides from Ira?
Sure, I can run through them pretty quickly. I think you answered a lot of what is included in there. So Ira, if you would, go ahead and put that on there. Jennifer, you took us to exactly what is on the horizon. And so as Bynum mentioned, right, there's a lot of work around the comp plan, the strategic plan, right, and the UDO. But there's also these racial equity trainings that I mentioned early on, right? So we're going to start, we're starting at leadership, we're starting with staff. And then we will continue to filter that out from, and when I say we, I mean, the Office of Equity, the City of Raleigh's Office of Equity has the lead. The mandatory staff trainings are expected in spring 2021. There is still discussion around the trainings for city council. And then successively, right, those trainings from there will follow for you all in terms of boards and commissions. So it'll be a full flow. But to Bynum's point, some of it is, right, is going to be a little slow going. But we are always available and, and ready to assist from many levels. You can contact the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And obviously you have inroads to Bynum who can get you additional resources. But one of the things I did want to take just a quick second to talk about was the racial equity toolkit, which you all have talked about several components of how we go through that process to assess where we're going and how we're going. And the racial equity toolkit just gives us a framework to operate from so that we can have progress. And some of the key things that you mentioned today, one is establishing, or we often, we offer to you was that racial equity statement that gives us a statement of what the vision looks like, of where we want to go for all people in Raleigh, not just those who benefit from some of our policies, but also those who are burdened. And then we take a look at data to help support that. And many of you have had that conversation with us right now, learning about the past to help influence what we're doing moving forward. And then Bynum peppered in just a few minutes ago about community engagement and making sure that all voices are being considered and that we're meeting people where they are at. We're not necessarily just having evening meetings and the like. And that will help inform this racial equity plan for the entire city. So we are looking to complete that. Again, it probably may be 2021 before you see a, a good final draft of it. But it's one of those things where all of these different pieces need to go into it. And we want to make sure that we're not just putting out into the community, this is what we want to do as an organization. We want their input included as well. So that being said, again, this is a, you know, this is the national best practice. We really valued having gone through this cohort model because it gave us a framework and ability to move forward in these types of conversations, but also in the work that we're doing to, as a citywide collective effort. So with that being said, we like to end these all the same way. We have one minute, so if you can unmute yourself, we ask you just to say one word of how you're feeling after this conversation, just one word. And now you can take the screen now. Thank you. And I'll just go around with where I see people are unmuted. Commissioner Lampman? Oh, sorry.
Which one is that? Optimistic? Optimistic? Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Heartened.
Thank you. Commissioner McIntosh?
Having a hard time thinking of a word. I'll say hopeful.
Commissioner Hicks?
Hopeful and ready to work.
Awesome. Commissioner Winters?
Awesome. Commissioner Winters?
I'm just relieved. Good joke, y'all.
I got it. I laughed. Commissioner Miller, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Encouraged.
So, and I will leave for our last and final leader, the chair, Chair Thomas Ulo?
Energized.
Thank you so much. I will speak on behalf of staff. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this conversation. We're hopeful that this will help you in your work moving forward. And if you have any additional information or requests of us, we're happy to help and assist. Ken Bowers?
Just wanted to say thank you for really frank and open discussion. I feel like I learned a lot by listening, not only about the topic, but about each of you as individuals. So it was very enlightening and hopefully the start of much work to go to come our way in the future. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you to Latisha and Bynum for your leadership on this. I appreciate your time today. I guess with that, I guess we all can sign off? All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a really nice holiday season. If we don't see each other, I don't, I think that there might be a committee meeting, but aside from that, everyone have a nice holiday if we don't see each other.
Kelly, are we doing strategy soon? Is that next week?
We're doing next week.
Okay. Bye, guys.